We'll call the October 21st City Council Meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the pledge prayer and the fact of the day, please, sir.
Soon added to the prayer, our Father God will come once again to say thank you for that opportunity to be yet among the living and not among the dead, to dwell in a country where we can serve and praise you. We come now asking your blessings upon this city council meeting, blessed our mayor, these councilmen, and all the participants that are here this afternoon. Blessed lead us and guide us in decisions that we make, will be those to be pleased and accepted at your site and to be in the best interest of our community and those to be served in thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fact for today, in the Prince Town of Salon Sur Martin, an American officer selects a body, the first unknown soldier to be honored with, among the approximately seventy-seven thousand United States servicemen, killed on the Western Front during World War I. Four American bodies were transported to Salon that was buried at nearby cemeteries. These men were buried without any indication of name, rank, organization, or date of death. Sergeant Edward Younger, the man given the task of making this election, carried a spray of white roses with which to mark the chosen casket. He selected the third casket from the left and thus began the journey of the unknown soldier, bearing the inscription, "An unknown American who gave his life in the World War." The chosen casket traveled to Paris and then to Li Hallouf, France, where it would board the cruiser Olympia for the voyage across the Atlantic. Once back in the United States, the unknown soldier was buried in Arlington National Cemetery near Washington DC. Fact of the day.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, approval of the minutes. Any changes to the minutes? Not look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, presentations, Jeff Weatherford. While he's coming up, just want to tell you, we've got some distinguished guests in the room with us. We've got Lisa and Susan from St. John's Water Management. You going to stand up? And Jeff Littlejohn from Onsite. So, thank you for coming out tonight. They have an interest in this project. So, with that, Mr. Weatherford, you're...
Well, Commissioners, Mayor, introduce a program here today talking about septic tank conversion. That, as y'all are aware from the previous efforts we used with our own wastewater treatment plant, that nitrogen getting into the spring system is of a great concern. Well, we cleaned up our portion of it, but right now we've got a lot of septic systems that are still out there. And these septic systems put these extra nutrients into the system, creating potentials for algae blooms, fish kills, those types of things. And we want for our springs to be important because they're important, they're an important part of our ecology here. So, basically, this project would be provided by the City of Apopka in conjunction with St. John's Water District and Onsite. Basically, what we'd do is we'd replace these individual systems with little micro wastewater treatment plants at each residence. After the installation, basically, instead of having their normal septic system maintenance and such, they'd have, the residents would only have a sewer bill, just like everyone else with regular city sewer has. How's it work? Well, it's not a septic, it's not a next-generation septic tank. It's actually a micro wastewater plant. Basically, sits there in the backyard. It has been field-tested by the state of Florida to make sure that it works the way we'd like. It exceeds the state treatment standards and is continuously monitored by state-licensed operators remotely, the same as our system would be. That it has a SCADA control system where, as it's monitored, they'll know of their problems, they'll be able to make adjustments and such. There's no risk of sewer overflows or clogging or anything like that during power failures. The system will continue operating on its own and storing up and recirculating during that period of time. The funding replacement, it's actually grant-funded by Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the St. John's River Water Management District. Way too many letters in that acronym. St. John's River Water Management District. That they're providing the funding, most of the funding for this, although there are some shared costs. What's next? As we said, that this is going to go out there and look at these different systems, but it's a voluntary program. We're going to start doing some community engagement with our sustainability people here and educating the citizens about it. Be a flyer campaign, social media campaign, and dedicated webpage. We'll be reaching out to those areas that are closest to the springs that have the most impact. And again, like I said, this is voluntary. We're not forcing anyone to do anything. That if they'd like to participate, then we'll partner with them. We'll come in, we'll change out their septic system to this micro wastewater treatment plant, and then they'll get a sewer bill each month to cover the maintenance and the treatment, that type of thing, the monitoring and such, each month. And with that, that pretty much wraps up the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or better yet, turn them over to Jeff Littlejohn.
Any questions?
I'm glad you have that neighborhood picture, because, I mean, the people that have approached me the most have been residents from that particular neighborhood, so it's probably relevant that you have that up on the screen. Just kind of talk me through, what does that cost structure look like? So, it's grant-funded, partial-city funded, partial-resident funded? What does that look like?
It's primarily, it's grant and city-funded. That, Mayor, do you know, remember this?
Yeah, Jeff, I think it's twenty-five-hundred's what the city's, our obligation is, twenty-five-hundred, and the systems are twelve to fourteen thousand, somewhere in that range.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come on up? This is Jeff Littlejohn, who's the, we go way, well, I don't go way back with Jeff. I go way back. His mother and father, I dealt with a lot when I was a legislator in Tallahassee. So, it's great to be, have son doing the same thing that mother and father were doing, you know, just a few years ago.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the apple doesn't fall too far from the tree. Commissioner, great question. First, I just want to say, since I did get a chance at the microphone, to thank the mayor and in this community for your support to roll this kind of program out. It's much needed. You know, the state has been calling for solutions for springs pollution for years, and we're happy to be able to culminate a project right here so close to where we began testing. So, right down the road at the St. John's River Water Management District Field Service Station at Lake Apopka was where the very first one of these units was installed in the state of Florida about three years ago. And as Jeff mentioned, they've been tested by the Department of Environmental Protection for that time, right here in this community, or right near, you know, right near this community. So, we love being able to start where we, you know, right here where we got started. To answer your question, Commissioner, the state and the Water Management District are picking up seventy-five percent of the costs, and the city has agreed to pick up the delta. So, the cost of the homeowner should be minimal or none, or zero. There could be a possibility of a cost if there's an issue like, you know, a fence has to be removed and replaced in order to access the system. The decision hasn't been made whether the program should pick up all of those ancillary costs, or if there are some of those site-by-site costs that might need to be worked out with the homeowner to pay extra. But our goal is to make this voluntary and be as easy as possible for the homeowner with the state and the Water Management District and the city picking up the balance of this. I think we have enough funding to do twenty units without any cost to homeowners at all.
Okay, yeah, that was going to be another question of mine. Like, how many people are still on septic in the City of Apopka that would, this would be applicable?
We've probably got, well, it's not only the ones that are in the city, it's also, one of the challenges we have with Apopka is Thompson Road, okay? My neighborhood is, most of the neighbors in the back are in Orange County, then you have the two neighborhoods, Deer Lake and the other neighborhood, are in Orange County, and yet they're in our utility services, which at some point could become a problem is we have to meet the BMAPs because we're challenged with upgrading the water quality in our service area. Well, we're not getting property taxes in that service area, and yet we're going to be required to upgrade the water quality based on Orange County residents as well as ours. So, we've got, I don't know how many septic tanks we've got in Apopka.
I can find out the exact number, but it's safe to say that it's more than a thousand.
Yeah, I mean, not pressing, but...
In some cases, this will be, and like I said, this is a starter program where we're looking to get started in some of the areas closest to the springs. There are some other areas where we've got some mobile home parks that are on septic, that are inside the city and such, where we think it would actually be more cost-effective to actually put them on regular city sewer. So, it'll be a combination of things as we try and move through to get...
Yeah, and so, just so I understand, like, the first twenty, so I get it, seventy-five percent grant funding, twenty-five percent potentially City of Apopka funding our, so we're putting upfront the capital investment upfront, and then the idea is that it's paid back through their sewage bill over time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, after...
Not really. No, that's, the fifty dollars, approximately fifty dollars is the maintenance, so that they, it would be, if the pump goes out, they would, Onsite would fix it.
Maintenance and operations costs are what gets built into that bill. This upfront cost, that it's the grant and then the city trying to help with the, with helping to meet our goals for the BMAP.
Okay. So, but I guess what I'm getting at is, if these first twenty go very well, and this is something that more residents are interested in doing outside of grant funding and this setup, would then the residents have to purchase this on their own and then do the operational cost on top of that?
With the funding we have right now, then yes, they would have to sit here and do it on their own. Then again, we could then take it over and bill them for those maintenance and operations costs. Our intent is that if this works out and tends to be a popular program, is to go back to our good friends at St. John's and see if we can find some more funding.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I'd just like to follow up on that item. I happen to know that St. John's has about a $1.5 million fund for this seventy-five percent match, and this community is one of three communities in Florida that are eligible for that funding. So, there's more money available if we run out with this first twenty. I think that the goal here is to launch it with this program, determine the amount of the appetite for growth, and then talk to our funding partners at the state and the Water Management District to identify more funds.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because if I do my quick math, right, twenty-five-hundred dollars at twenty-five percent is ten thousand dollars for this unit, roughly. But, right, for these new septic reinstalls or replacements, it's much more expensive than that.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, and, you know, we've got a Glen having bigger lots, it becomes even more expensive. Like, I know Orange County's looking at Sweetwater West, and they're talking about sixty thousand dollars to convert from septic to sewer. So, we're down, you know, at a much more reasonable cost. And I hope, one of the things, Jeff, if you wouldn't mind sending to all the commissioners is the results you've gotten from the...
The testing unit?
Field station.
Yes, sir.
To show you how effective that their system is as far as reducing nitrogen and phosphorus. The one thing I'll add, and there's some confusion, maybe some people a little nervous about, you know, pumps and all that as far as some of these systems out there, but the nice thing about this system, if electricity goes down, which it could under a hurricane situation or something, the system will continue to operate. And that's one of the big challenges of some of these ATUs, advanced treatment systems, that they go down, you're, starts backing up your house almost immediately. So, these systems will continue to work even if the power's down for three or four days. So, it's, I think, a really cost-effective solution that takes care of most of the issues we might face. Commissioner Smith, you've got some questions. I can see them.
Well, I guess my first question was, you said to the homeowner there'd be a small fee. Small could be...
That as far as the monthly, it'd be the monthly normal, about the same as you're paying for your sewer every month. But it's not like that where this is a ten thousand dollar unit and we're going to bill them for the cost of the ten thousand dollar unit over a ten-year period and that their sewer bill's going to be, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars a month or whatever with interest or anything. It's going to be like you get a normal water bill, and, you know, that with your water bill, you've got the sewer component. It would be the sewer component.
So, when will this program launch and how will it?
Well, we're looking to get out there with the community engagement here, basically in November, November, December timeframe. I would say that it's probably going to be next year before we actually start seeing takers and getting things into the ground and such.
Okay. And, you know, and the front part of your neighborhood is also on septic. So, they'd be, they'd be their next neighborhood. We kind of were grappling as, do we open up to a whole bunch more people and then run through the twenty systems, and all of a sudden we got fifty backlog? And I'd rather, let's get the first twenty and then we'll ask our funding partners to come back. If we get more, you know, let's go back to them and try to...
So, why wasn't my neighborhood selected?
Because the other one's just a little bit closer to the spring.
Good answer, man.
Mr. Banks?
Basically, same questions, but so, the bottom line is it's going to be factored based upon water usage. It will be an attack on fee based upon how much usage. So, it's not the same for every person. It's going to be based upon their usage.
Well, that, for these people, it'll generally run the same. Do you know, do you have an estimate of what we talked about as far as costs? It's, it's in flux, but that we don't know for sure yet because we haven't figured out all the costs.
Yeah. So, some of that money will go toward us, the monitoring, and then some of the money, most of the money will go to Onsite for replacing pumps and fixing...
Most of it will be the cost of maintenance and monitoring. That, as he said, it's likely going to be less than fifty dollars a month. For these units, it will typically be about the same, because they're going to be the same-sized unit. If we had a large house that had to have larger capacity and they needed a larger system than this and it upsized, their bill would obviously be different. But for the average homeowner that we're doing this with, there's a whole constant. Whereas, you know, that right now ours, our water meter is based on how much water we use and everything. Generally, your sewer is not. It's just based on a, an average cost.
Okay. I'll wait till it further clarifies.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff or... Jeff? Okay. Lisa, Susan, y'all, anything you want to add?
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. So, Lisa Kelly, St. John's River Water Management District. I'm her Assistant Executive Director, and I am here today to say we are very proud to be a partner in this project. It has so many benefits to the springs, which are important to the district as well as to the City of Apopka. You're setting a regional example here, and we are very proud to have this opportunity to invest in this type of innovation. So, thank you for having me and thanking you for having this as an agenda item for your consideration today.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions? Okay. Good. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Thank you. And so, we'll probably have mailers out in the next three weeks? Okay. So, mailer will be going to all the homeowners in week of a Glen in the next three weeks. Okay, next up, this is kind of a last-minute presentation, but I had a call from Melissa Byrd that she was excited about a program that the Apopka Fire Department came up on their own, and she wanted to come give us a little heads-up on some things that OCPS is doing with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me come in here last minute. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me have a little bit of your time tonight. I wanted to come to do a little bragging on our Apopka Fire Department. I spoke a couple months ago at Leadership of Apopka with the Apopka Chamber, and Lieutenant Maynard was there, part of the group, and he came up to me and said, "You know, I have this idea. I'm thinking, you know, normally we do fire safety, but I know with COVID, we can't really go in the schools, and it wouldn't be a good idea to bring all the kids through the firetruck. And so, I'm thinking maybe we could do some videos or something." I said, "Well, you know, that sounds neat. Let's have a meeting." And so, we, I put together a meeting with him and some district folks, and we talked about it further, and he had just all kinds of great ideas. And so, he went, ran with it, just ran with it. And these videos, they produced seven videos, okay? And I think I sent them to you, Mayor. I don't know if you had a chance to look up. They're great, aren't they? They produced seven videos, and the coolest thing about this is, these videos are not only getting shown to our local Apopka schools, but they're distributed, they have been distributed out to all of our OCPS schools. So, all of our OCPS schools are enjoying these fantastic videos by our own Apopka Fire Department. So, I just wanted to come tonight. I had him put together a little montage of small clips from a few of the videos, so I want us to take a little look at this presentation real quick.
Welcome to AFG TV. My name's Jerry Maynard, and I'm going to be your host today. Let's check in with Eric Barrios for the weather. Thanks for the weather update.
Ash and I are here to talk to you today about fire safety and stop, drop, and roll.
Welcome to the Apopka Fire Department, Station Five.
Your cat's stuck in a tree?
Yep.
Is it Mr. Kibbles? We know him.
Today, we're going to go over the equipment that we use, such as our fire gear. Whoa. What? Well, what else can you do? I mean... Whoa. Uh, okay.
I wonder if I can do that?
Whoa. How'd I get here?
Integrity is the most important characteristic trait or quality in the fire service.
Phone. Hello?
What is the most important thing to tell a 911 dispatcher?
The most important thing to remember when calling 911 is to let them know who you are, where you are, and what your emergency is.
Each video's about seven minutes long, and like I said, there's seven of them, and they're really engaging, really fun. The kids, I'm sure the kids are loving them. And we're just so excited. I'm so proud of them, and I just really want to thank Lieutenant here because he really showed tremendous leadership and took over this project and just went way, way above and beyond what we expected. And he even told me today, "Make sure that you acknowledge that it's a whole team effort." There was a lot of people that worked on it, all the firemen really enjoyed working on it. They, he was telling me earlier that they, it brought them a lot of joy, and, you know, that's something these days we haven't seen a lot of. So, they really enjoyed it, and he has promised me that season two is going to be even more exciting. I think he has Tom Terry on tap for a couple of the episodes. So, I'm just so proud of them. I just wanted to come brag about them a little bit.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you. Yeah, we hear Hollywood's calling, but we're not, we're not giving him his phone number. So, thank you, Lieutenant Maynard. Appreciate you. Okay. Agenda. Edward, any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on just a general public matter? Anybody? Okay. All right. Consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the consent agenda items? Have not looked for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
That was Smith.
That was Smith? I'm sorry.
Happens once a meeting now.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Business item, final development plan, Mid-Florida Logistics. Jim?
Actually, Jean.
Good evening. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the final development plan for Mid-Florida Logistics Park Lot Four. The property is located west of State Road 429, east of Hermit Smith Road, and south of GE Road. This is the area of the property. On February 20th, 2019, the City Council approved a planned development master plan, preliminary development plan for Mid-Florida Logistics Park, which details the development of five industrial lot park, I'm sorry, five lot industrial park subdivision. The applicant is requesting approval of a final development plan for Lot Four for the construction of approximately 246,000 square feet of industrial warehouse building. All elements of the final development plan are consistent with approved PD master plan, planned preliminary development plan. Access to the site is via Shelby Industrial Drive. A public wrote, "The approved PD master plan preliminary development plan allows a parking ratio of .89 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. For this proposed building, 220 parking spaces are required, while the applicant is proposing 264 parking spaces. Consistent with approved PD master plan preliminary development plan, trees including crepe myrtles, lugustrum, southern magnolias, and live oaks are provided on site. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to approve the Mid-Florida Logistics Park Lot Four Final Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions."
Any questions for Jean? Is this going to be her last one for three or four months?
Not yet.
Not yet?
One more.
One more between, okay, all right. Yes. Any questions for Jean? All right.
Has a tenant been announced yet?
When we talked last with the applicant, there was no end user yet.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Good evening. This is Bruce Taylor, David Schmidt Engineering, 12301 Lake Underherod, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any additional.
No questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the final development plan for Mid-Florida Logistics Park Lot Four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2782. No, I'm sorry. This is the...
Sale.
Right, right. Jim Hitt, it's the highest bidding offer. You, are you... Okay. There we go.
Thank you. This is a piece of property that we went out to bid for sale offers. It's located on the southeast corner of Park Ave and Sandpiper Road. It was originally a 8.45 acre parcel. We are taking a portion of the roadway of Sandpiper, shaving a little bit off, and it brings that whole parcel down to 8.03, or 093 acres. That's so that we can align Sandpiper on the east side to Sandpiper on the west side, and traffic light is going to be planned for that corner also. Back in February 2017, we declared two pieces of surplus property. This was one of the Marshall Lake property. Out off of Johns Road was the other piece of property. That one's sold, and of course, we've got a huge development that's going on there. This piece took a little bit more time. We did go out to bid at one point in time, and we did have one offer. Unfortunately, the people that offered, that had the original offer, they backed out of the deal. They realized that they didn't have the tenants that they needed at the time, so they backed out of the deal. So, we let it sit for a little while. We did have to get the appraisal redone, and we did get the survey completed. We also have a survey that staff did that took out that portion of Sandpiper Road to bring it down to that 8.093 acres. The official, the official advertisement did... The official, um, the official advertisement did have a lot of good information in it, it talked about the, the Sandpiper Road, the address, of course, that there's water sewer reuse was not available. The appraisal price for the 8.45 acres was 1.2675 million dollars. One of the requirements that we did have on this was that it was supposed to actually have a minimum bid of that, but we did, we were gonna take into consideration taking that portion of Sandpiper out, which, in the staff report that we put together, would actually bring the price down to only about 1.213 million dollars. The two bids that were submitted, did come in, Terminus Realty LLC came in at 851,000 dollars, and Rohitas Argwal came in at 800,000 dollars, so both of those did not meet the minimum bid requirement. However, we do wanna bring this to you as a, as a, as an option, whether or not we go with one of the bids, or, or the higher bid, or if we hold on to it and wait. One of the things that did come up was a time period for the first bid, for sale, where we would basically complete the sale within 190, or 120 days, and then they asked for an additional 90 days if they needed it. That would be up to your discussion, if we wanted to just make sure everything was done within 120 days, or if we wanted to add in 60, 90, or 120 days for, for the bid, or for additional timeframe. I believe that's, yep, that's all the information that we have on it. It was advertised, not only did we put something out on the property, it was also on the city's website, it was, the bids were through DemandStar, we also advertised in the newspaper, and we had just the, the two bids. We really don't know why we didn't get more, but I think COVID probably had a little bit to do with that.
I, I'm very much against it, I think it's bad stewardship, 25% less of the value for a prime piece of property on our main thorough, one of our main thoroughfares, I, I just don't see doing that. I mean, if I were the bidder, I think that's a good deal, but, no, I, I just, I, I can't see doing that myself, at all.
I also agree that we decline the bid.
Okay. Same. Okay. Alright, Mr. Attorney, what, where do we go from here if we want to decline the bid?
Well, at, at this point, I mean, Chapter 166 gives the City Council great latitude in how it wants to dispose of its property. At this point, there's been a bid, the bid doesn't meet the minimum bid requirements, so you can, as a council, vote to reject the two bids, and then begin to analyze the options and how you want to dispose of the property by any other means, you're not limited to just simply putting the, the property to bid. So, the statutes give the city great latitude on how it is to dispose property, you can put it up for sale and see if anyone comes up, just as you would sell some, sell any of the other, any, any other real estate. So, if it appears that the will of the council is to reject the two bids, then, council the, 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 counsel the council to, to make that your motion to reject the two bids, and to direct staff to see it, any other methods in order to dispose the property.
How long is the, the appraisal? We, no, the, we had, so we had the...
Oh, we had over two months to, to, that, that we were, had this advertised out for.
Okay, and so we, we had the appraisal done, and how long, is, is there a statute as to how long that appraisal's good for?
Typically, six to, six, six months to a year, it just depends on the piece of property it is, and what, what other type of actions are occurring around that piece of property, but six months is typically a, a good time period. Okay.
What, is it, um, what's the entitlement on it right now, is it institutional, I mean, what's the...
It's commercial, straight commercial with CC zoning. It allows for a whole bunch of different uses.
Right, which is even more...
Yes, and water and sewer is right there, so you don't have to extend water, water and sewer lines to it, so it's, and with that option for the potential traffic light and, you know, kicking in for that, that could happen even, that could happen faster, and then, of course, that makes it that much more valuable, because it's that much more accessible.
Exactly, as we improve it, that piece is gonna be more valuable.
Mm-hmm.
So, doesn't make sense to me to sell it at loss.
So, what do we, what's our, what's the council's pleasure on, what do you want to do at this point?
I would...
I guess we have to reject the bid, as, as, and then, but I'd like to kinda have, what's our, what's our plan going forward?
Did you say that we can post it just for a regular sales transaction? Is that what you're saying?
There's great latitude on however you wanted to properly dis, to dispose of the property, but I think the first matter would be to close out this bid that's outstanding and reject the bids, and therefore, then, this process that was begun can be terminated, and then direct staff to dispose of the property, they, staff can come back to you, we give you options, we could do it this way, this way, without necessarily, don't necessarily have to direct staff do it this way, but I think direct staff to examine other options to dispose the property, would probably be a, a possible option for you to take now, after closing off and rejecting the two bids that were submitted, as...
Yeah, I mean, I would move to close, reject the two bids that were submitted, and direct staff to come back with options for the disposal of that piece of property.
Okay. We've got both bidders here, I don't know if we wanna hear from them or not, does, I don't guess it really matters, at this point, it's, it's, yeah. So, we, we got a motion by...
And it's not personal, 'cause I have no idea who it is, they're all wearing masks.
So, we got a, got a, got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith, to reject the two bids, and direct staff to come back with some other options as to how to dispose of the property. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
You got a hand right there.
Right, I mean, she, you wanna come forward, I, I don't know that it, you know, at this point, which, we're gonna go back to staff, and they're gonna bring it back to... Sure, come, come forward, yes ma'am, come on forward.
Thank you, and to all of you. I'm very much interested, I live and work in...
Name an address for the record, please ma'am.
My name is Manju Agarwal, and Rohitas Agarwal, we had bid for that, and it's, I accept that it is not accepted, but I would like to show my interest in the property, like, I have lived and worked in Apopka for past 18 years, and now we want this piece of property to set up medical offices and endoscopy center, so that the, there is no endoscopy center right now, because the hospital has moved, and I'm willing to, for the options you give, I'm very much interested, and I'm willing to pay the, the price what has been quoted, or more on, more on that, and I have the resources, and I have the cash, I can do that.
We can't, can't, can't accept a...
At, at the present time, that was the, the items were, were, the property was up for bid, the two bids were accepted, and the bids were rejected. Any other further negotiation for the property's gonna have to be outside of this, and depending on whether or not, at this point, with the offer to bid the property is closed, it is staff's prerogative right now to even determine whether to put the property back up for sale. As the, as the bids, it, it's similar to, an offer has been placed on a house that's for sale, and you reject the offer.
Sure.
There is then open for negotiation, at this point, it's not a question of bidding for the property, now it's a, it's a question of however the city wants to put up, how to put up the property for sale, simply putting it up for sale as, as you would at your residential property, and then come up and take offers. But, there's no formal action right now for this council to take, the matter is not being brought up for consideration, so it's solely up to, if the prospective buyer wants to negotiate with the city staff, that's, that's up to the city staff, and any final contract, or any final transaction will be brought forward to the council for, for its approval.
Alright, thank you.
But there's nothing to do right now.
Good.
Let me, Mr. Hitt, how old is the appraisal that we have now?
I don't have the date on it, but it was about four months ago.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
It changed from the first one...
It did not?
2017, it would've been about a thousand dollars.
Okay, thank, thank you ma'am, appreciate that. So, if you just wanna check back with staff, I guess it's probably with Jim Hitt?
I got you.
Okay, okay, and then we'll, we'll, we'll have to figure out what, what that looks like, but...
I'm ready with everything, so thank you.
Thank you ma'am, okay.
I hope you know this, I've worked in Apopka for 18 years, I suspect I'm gonna be...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have ordinance number 2782. Susan?
Ordinance number 2782. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T to mixed-use Kelly Park Interchange, MUKPI, and assigning neighborhood and transition overlay districts for certain real property located on the west side of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, approximately one quarter mile north of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth-Sorrento Road, comprising 56.51 acres more or less, and owned by Orlando Beltway Associates, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Bobby, any changes? No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on, good? Anybody else want to speak on this issue? Alright, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2782.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2792.
Okay, ordinance number 2792. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from agricultural to industrial for certain real property located east of Clarecona Road and north of Stone Road, comprising .99 acres more or less, and owned by Randolph Real Estate Investments, Inc., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Bobby, any changes? No changes. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2792.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, we need to go back, it was just brought to my attention, we need to go back to the previous agenda item for the, just, the Orlando Beltway Associates, that agenda item called for, it was a two-part, the recommended action was for adoption of the ordinance, which you did, uh, there's also the, the approval of the master plan, which was not done, if we can go back, and, um...
So, this is on ordinance number 2782?
Correct, so that we are seeking a motion to... To approve the master plan.
Approve the master development. You have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next up, ordinance number 2793.
Okay, ordinance number 2793. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from AG, Agricultural District, to IL, Light Industrial District, for certain real property located east of Clarecona Road and north of Stone Road, comprising .99 acres more or less, and owned by Randolph Real Estate Investments, Inc., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Bobby, any changes? Okay, anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2793.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2794.
Ordinance number 2794. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described lands situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Properties LLC, located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Bobby, any changes? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2794.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Did I, I miss you again? I'm sorry about that. Second by Commissioner Smith?
Honestly, I wasn't looking, I did think it was Becker, too.
I did.
Okay, alright.
I've got a pastor voice now?
Yeah, give it, give it raw, I need that, that real deep, you know? All those in favor, aye? All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I think his voice cracked, is what happened.
Alright, uh, next up, ordinance number 2795.
Okay, ordinance number 2795. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting 2020, 2021 through 2025, 2026, five-year capital improvement annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for an exclusion from codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
This is just for proposed park on Harmon Road, and amending the CIP is gonna help us try, meet our grant application requirements, it's just procedural at this point.
Any questions for Brian? Okay. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2795 at first reading, and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports. Fisher Banksen?
A couple things, one, and I had voiced this to staff earlier, just the concern, I know we have our new trees that are planted by the hotel, some different things around town, and it just looks like some of the fronds were suffering there, um, I'm not sure where we are in that, I did talk to an arborist, and they did voice concern being new plants, so I just wanted to bring that back to attention, let's make sure that there's not anything that, that they're, I don't know if the, the hotel is responsible for trimming those, 'cause they don't look as nice with the bottom branches ground out, but I was more concerned that being a new plant, are they rooted well and doing well? So, I just wanted to bring that up, there, there's just a few around town, so if we can just kinda look into that. Uh, other thing, just wanted to clarify...
Why don't we, why don't we just, real quick, Brian, you wanna...
You're talking about the palm trees by the hotel?
Yeah, the palm trees, yeah, right there on McGee.
You know, that, under the agreement, you know, they're taking over, the, the development takes over those trees, so we can, you know, we can reach out to them, but, I know, why we're talking, while we're there, why don't we tell, tell them about the palm tree, or the agreement we've got on the, on the palm trees, or Edward, is that, you're...
Yeah, that is, Brian might be able to speak to this as well, but, um, we have the palms that you know that we have on Main Street, 441, that we have done at 436 and 441, and a few other ones that we have, we're here at the parking now, we have some more new palms in the parking, we have, um, in this budget, we have a vendor that is going to be trimming those for us, I think they trim them twice a year, based on the requirements, so we, we, we'll have a vendor who'll be doing that, maintaining those for us, and I think the first cut comes in November, I think they said November was the first cut, so we, we have a vendor now that will, that will be keeping those up for us.
Yeah, good, that, again, not just aesthetic, but make sure that they're healthy, too, 'cause that's a lot of investments.
Yeah.
Okay, um, other thing, I just wanted to clarify something, you know, we, we all get emails, and I was warned that there are things going around on Nextdoor, which I'm not, not on that, I just wanted to even speak to the public, I have not been, nor have ever, ever even been asked to be a part of secret meetings, so I don't know where that came from, and there's no conspiracy to, to bump out Commissioner Becker, it's like, you know, uh...
Is that one that's around?
That's, that's what, yeah, um, why you weren't invited, and I'm a part of these secret meetings, so I, if they are, I don't even, they're so secret, I don't know about them. But, you know, I mean, kidding aside, I know that there's great concern about this, and, and again, maybe, maybe the paper would like to do a further explanation on quasi-judicial, and the issues, why we can't speak more specifically, uh, because we have to sit in the quasi-judicial situation, so to say ahead of time to any party, you got this one in the bag, actually jeopardizes their rights, and that's my bigger concern, because we do, we're here for our citizens, and I think our citizens need to know that, and maybe with a little more clarification for them, they would realize, because, you know, we get the threatening letters, and all of those different things, which I can understand, if you don't know, that's why we can't speak further on those things, but, uh, you know, the biggest thing is, I think people are fatigued of seeming to get wave after wave of threats of their lifestyle, and I would understand that if...
Well, and, and that's the reason I put the, the article in the, the chief, and, you know, also on the website, is to show people, here's the process, and regardless, I can't even, I've become king for a day, you still have the process, it, this is the process, and, and here are the opportunities you as the public have to weigh in on whatever decisions we make, so, it, it, you know, and I've got the, you know, I've gotten calls and emails that, I, I can't believe you're already in the bag, I like, how, how'd you get that from that, that article, but that's, you know, I've gotten those calls, and... how, how did you get that from that, that article, but that's, you know, I've gotten those calls, and.
And for, and for them to understand that if we say anything that seems to favor one side or the other, we could actually hurt their legal case. So it's real frustrating being here and not being able to speak freely on those things, but it, it is a, a legal matter, and then fair to all, and then it gives the greatest protection for our own citizens, and that's, that's the main purpose, so.
Yes, I, I'm with you.
Just, just wanted to clarify those.
Commissioner Smith?
I concur with it. Commissioner Banksen, in reference to the emails.
Secret meetings?
Well, I, I've never been accused of attending secret meetings. May have been accused of not responding to the three-hundred-and-forty emails that I received. But, uh, I'm probably in the even worse position, because I live in that community, and so I have to be careful what I say as well, and I just acknowledge that I received the email, and that's about all I can, can do legally at this point. Uh, but I do want to also remind us that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month as well as Domestic Violence Month, and, uh, last council meeting, I wore my pinks for breast cancer, and this meeting, I wore my purple for.
You, you're the man.
Domestic violence, and so want those individuals to know, we support them, and we hear from their calls.
And we had the, I don't know if you went by City Hall last night, but it was, it, purple, it looked good, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, well, I want to address that, too, and I'm not even going to address secret meetings, because I think that's below me, that one would even assume that I do something like that, because I would never. Um, but, but to your point, even on, you know, land use changes where it's more legislative in nature, and we have a little bit more latitude, at the end of the day, if any of us up here commit to how we're going to vote on anything, it would violate the law. So, we can all have our opinions and be up here, even on a legislative thing where we do have that latitude, but to commit to a vote, how we're going to vote, it would just be not appropriate, and it would be against the law. And that's, that, you know, every email I get, and to Commissioner Smith's point, you know, we get several a day. I wouldn't say, some days we probably get five, some days we get ten. Um, so, in all fairness to me, I have gone a little bit form in my, in my response to people, but the fact of the matter is, we have to weigh all the facts. We have to wait and see what, you know, the application looks like, what the community meeting looks like, what the feedback from that community, community meeting looks like, what the DRC decides, what the Planning Commission recommends to this board, this council, for us to even start thinking about it. Um, so, let, let it play out. Um, we have to let it run through the process, and we, we just do our thing. So, that's all I can say on the matter.
Yeah, I kind of liken it to, you know, being in the jury pool and getting called up, and you get on the call of the jury, and they start asking you questions, and you go, well, that guy's guilty. Well, then you're immediately thrown off, and we're kind of that position, if we say, yeah, that, you know, that's a great project, or that's, or I'm voting against it, you know, they want to throw you off the, the jury, which is kind of what we are, you know, in the quasi-judicial, and eat, but as, as Commissioner Becker said, even in, you know, when you're talking about legislative, it's still that, that sense of, right, that, that we, we got to go in with an open mind and, and get all the facts, and then we make our decisions, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, and then the only other things that I had pressing for me were some director-level positions that I know that we still don't have, uh, filled, one of which is the builder-planner, uh, director-level position. Is that being posted? Is that being pursued?
Builder, plann-
Well, like David Moon's old, old position?
Um, David Moon's position has been filled. Bobby Howell was promoted into that position.
Oh. It's not going to be a director-level position?
Um, it wasn't before.
It wasn't?
No, no, no.
Okay.
It was a manager, it was just a manager's position.
My apologies.
But, but, and we are currently, um, his older, his old position, the planner position is currently, we've been, been interviewing for that planner position.
And then, for the HR, I know we've, we've talked about this, but I, I firmly believe we need a director-level position in that role, because we do have such a large workforce, and it's, you know, a certain percentage of our budget expenditure, there's just a lot of risk if we don't have a formal HR director position staffed. Um, we have it in our budget, it was approved in our budget, and I would like to adhere to what we set in the budget, um, for that, that position. So I know that there was kind of a piecemeal to going into that position, but I, I would like to have a director-level posted and staffed.
Um, Commissioner, we have struggled hiring in that position, and I will tell you, what has happened is, HR, there's a lot of things in HR that we are trying, process that we're trying to get together. We have had, um, turnover in that position, um, if you will, um, and, and I will tell you that a lot of that turnover is because of some of the prior, um, people that we had in those positions, um, were not strong in those positions, and so, what we have done is, Jeannie, um, Green, who was the office manager and community development, um, stepped up and, and to fill that role for us, because she was going to retire, she's got twenty-six years of experience with the city, she knows the employees, she sat on the pension board, so she has a lot of experience in that area to be able to help the employees. So what we've done is, we've, um, we've given her that opportunity to sit in that, and it's, and it's an operations manager role right now. As you know, the director role will come to you, if there's a director, it would have to come to you for ratification, but Jeannie currently is, has, has stepped up the plate to, to fill that role, to kind of get things flowing, get things moving, get the process going. We need to hire, we have a position we need to hire, she's currently going through that process to hire an HR specialist person, um, and trying to get those processes moving. Because as you know, most of HR, what it, what currently what HR does, it used to have payroll, it used to have risk, now HR just has benefits and onboarding and offboarding, it basically, and evaluation processes. That's the basic process that it has, a lot of this, it's, a lot of the things that were in HR have been moved to other departments. So, um, do we, will we have a director in that position? That's the goal, to eventually to get to one in that position, but like I said, Jeannie has, was going to retire, but she's, she's stepped up into that role to help us get things flowing, get things moving, get those positions filled, get the processes going. That's one of the problems, the problems we've had, is those processes haven't been, haven't been working, and I will tell you that she, that we've had a lot of good feedback from the employees, and she's gone into that role with communicating to the employees and giving them the information that they need. Um, so, ultimately, yeah, at the end of the day, yeah, I want to get to the director level, um, to director position in that role, whether it be, whether she take that going forward, or we move out and, and find.
Well, yeah, I, I think it's a, I think it's a tremendous risk to the city if we don't have a, a formal HR director that's skilled in HR, because there's a lot of nuance to HR. This isn't just, hey, I can process payroll, and I can make sure employee files are up to date, it's, you have to know laws, you have to know hiring practices, and they have to be done correctly, and it's almost a Switzerland of sorts on staff, to make sure that all of our staff have a kind of neutral third party to go to if they need an HR-related thing. Um, and so, I don't know Jeannie's background, I don't, I don't know her resume of things. Uh, what I do know is that we approved a director-level position in the budget, we all agreed to it, and I just want to make sure that we're going, we're on our way to staff that position.
And, and I will tell you that I'm, we are looking to get to that, to that place.
Yeah, I mean, I think, the other thing is, we forgot to mention Chuck, who's been trying to handle the financial side of HR, which, you know, he came in as a former police chief, but really good with numbers, so he's trying to get the financial side fixed, and then Jeannie's trying to fix the, the HR side, and.
Right.
So, you know, you just don't want to bring somebody into a bad situation and then make them fix something that, that, that wasn't their problem, so.
Right.
When we get the, everything kind of organized and fixed, that's when you got somebody with a fresh start, clean slate, come in and, and run the department for us, so.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's the right way to, you know.
Correct, and I will say, Commissioners, that we have been through a couple managers in those positions, and we haven't made improvements, and so, you're right, we have to get this stuff, get the house in order, get the house in order, then we can get, we need to have someone that has the expertise that's actually, we need somebody that has done the job, not somebody, this is their first or second year, we need somebody that's got, you know, seven-plus years of experience in that field, and it's been tough trying to find that, I will tell you that, but that is the ultimate goal, we ask Commissioners, is to get to that director level.
So, so the position that Mr. Green has now is a, a new position? Since it's not the director position, because I saw the other one advertised, the assistant?
The, the one that you saw advertised was the human resource, um, specialist.
Benefit specialist.
Benefit specialist, that's the, that's the current position that's being advertised, and then we have an HR specialist position that's currently, that we have, um, we have an employee in that position, and then the HR manager, there are only three, three positions in that department. Very small department, and keep in mind, the reason it is, is because a lot of the functions that were there were taken out, if you recall, we took risk and put it under the attorney. It, it was a better place for that function, so that the attorney could monitor those risks, those issues, um, it was better there, and then payroll, um, that was before I got, came back, but payroll moved to finance, so none of the payroll is done in HR now either, so there were people in those functions, but when those functions moved, those people moved to those areas or those departments, so there's a three, it's a three-member team that we currently have, and, um, the one that we're advertising will complete that team, so it's, it's, we're trying to get that team together, get that team built, and get the processes, um, cleaned up, as Mayor was saying, we're trying to get all the bills and everything cleaned up and everything straightened up, so that when we do get to that next step, um, it's, it's running, because I think that's the issue, I, I don't, I don't think you bring someone in until we have the house in order, and that's where we're trying to get, and we're, we're getting close.
And, and so then also, since we're talking about those positions, uh, where are we with the deputy chief position?
Um, that position, we have not advertised that position, that position that's still in the budget, Commissioner, it has not changed, so the position is still there, um, but, um, it's, it's there, we're just continuing to work with the chief and go, look through it, and, um, so, it's, we haven't lost, we haven't, the position's there, I will tell you, it's still there, we just have not advertised it.
But at some point, we will.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand why this is a hard question to answer.
Well, I think the problem, let me tell you, I think where we are is, is we've got, we're, we've been looking at cost measures, places, and, and where we can, where we have, can be more efficient in our departments. We've talked about, in Police Department, we've talked about captain levels, having more captains, um, having less captains, um, so one of the things that we looked at is, and, and I will tell you, and a chief can speak to this from his department or whatever, but if you know, in the fire department, we did the same thing. We do, we no longer have the deputy fire chief, the fire department has the district, or the, the, um, division chiefs, so he has, basically, we've kind of flattened that organization, because we're putting the positions down to where they're closer to the, to the service level that we provide, to the man, to the employees and the service level that we provide, so, that, that's what's happened in those, with those.
In public services.
In public services, we did the same thing. So what we're doing is kind of flattening that organization to get more, to provide more, um, to those, those, um, employees on the, on the.
Boots on the ground, yeah.
To give them more benefit on the front line. So, that's, you know, kind of where we've, when we looked back through the budget process, and we worked with the fire department, um, you know, that's, that was where some of the need was, was that to push more, we wanted more people down on those division levels, so.
So, so it's more like, we, we don't need a deputy chief?
Well, we've.
But when I look at the police departments, all of them have a deputy chief.
Hmm, I, so, I don't, I think there's some that don't, that have, that don't have one, that don't have the deputy chief in the center position, but, again, that's, um, you know, a decision, we've been, we've done pretty good, we've been operating very well without those, that extra level in between there. Um, you know, we've, we've talked about, like I said, we need another captain, we need more captain levels, you know, to flatten that part of the org chart, to get more help and get more, um, more down to the employee level, so, down to the, to the police officer level, so. But, but that police chief position, or that deputy chief position is in there.
Anything else, Commissioner Smith?
No.
Good, okay. All right, Edward?
Um, no, I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, nothing to, nothing to add.
Nothing yet.
And if you, if you, I was, I was going to, whether you needed any elaboration on the issues of quasi-judicial, and, and, um, you're sitting as legislative, but at, at this point, I think I'll let, I'll let your statement stand.
Okay. I got six or eight items here, I mean, we can run through pretty quickly. One is, you should have in a packet there, the legislative priorities, uh, the last two years, and so just, we've got time, if you want to just take a look at those, uh, what we've done is, I've listed them, where they got into the process, you know, obviously we had, uh, both Harmon Road and Fire Station Six, both got all the way to the governor's desk and then got vetoed, some other ones got stopped along the way, so, um, maybe in the next couple of weeks, we probably, next, maybe next commission meeting, if you guys kind of give me a priority list, depending on, you know, how the budget looks as to what, you know, how much we want to, how greedy we want to be, um, in the legislative session, but, so anyway, these are just both, both years, um, and we, obviously we can add something new to that as well.
Well, and from a prioritization standpoint, it sounds like there's some appetite for that Lake Cortez-Border Lake project at the state level.
Yeah, I, I, and there's, and there's different pots of money, that's legislative appropriation, and there's also DEP and St. John's Water Magic money, yeah. I could, I could talk about that, but why don't we wait till next week, or next commission meeting, um, you know, Jeff's going to go kind of over flooding in general across the, you know, the city, and, and some, some priorities that we want to, you know, take on, um, as, as it relates to that, so. Anyway, just take a look at that, and then, uh, it, we'll get back next week, or next, next commission meeting, and, and kind of hone in on a few of those items. Um, COVID numbers, we couldn't get anything real current, this was from last week, but, um, still trending down, things are still looking good, um, so that, that's, that's a good thing. Um, Phil Harmonic Concert, uh, you know, is going to be on December the twelfth, five o'clock, uh, at our amphitheater, from five to seven PM. So, we had a great response last year, and we want to double or triple it this year, so, come on out. Um, Brian has got the concert series, will start at the amphitheater every Saturday night, starting January ninth through May twenty-ninth. Uh, will also be free. Um, Chief, you want to talk about the accreditation? Just got renewed for, what, three more years? Is that right? Yes?
Excuse me, sorry. Yeah, I went through the accreditation process, it's been a couple of months ago. I recommend it would be re-credited, last week we Zoomed conference, because that's the thing these days, is, uh, you're removing the re-creditation.
That's awesome, thank you, yeah. Okay, a couple, uh, other things, a sales tax, interesting, I was, this weekend, I was with the Senate President, uh, Galvano, in a secret meeting, and we had. And told me that, uh, the numbers he just got were that we were two-hundred million ahead on sales tax, so, really good. Another, another, as I walk in the neighborhood at night with my wife, Debbie, we, um, we, there's a, a United Airline pilot lives in our neighborhood, and he said that, um, last, was it Monday or Sunday, was the first time that OIA has hit a million passengers coming through the gates. So, from a high of two-point-seven million, but he said it's, you know, it was down to almost nothing, so he said, you know, things are looking up at OIA, sales tax is looking up, so Commissioner Smith, thanks for your, your help on that, couldn't have done it without you.
Keep doing it.
Yeah. So, anyway, um, my good friend John Perry just gave me, just so for folks to know, we, on voting totals, from early voting and, and vote by mail, uh, we're at twenty-two percent in the Apopka area, so there, there could be some Orange County folks that, that, that voting in Apopka precinct, so already at twenty-two percent as of five o'clock today.
That's huge.
Huge number, yes, 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 yes. So, anyway, um, and last, we'll, uh, talk about, we're just, we're kind of, kind of in the early stages, but, well, we had a couple, we had two meetings with Altamont Springs. We're looking to, um, to revise our agreement, you know, we take on their reclaimed water, which comes from Crane's Roost and also from I-4, and they're, they're getting swamped with water, as are we, and, uh, so we're looking to, to, um, come up with a, a, a partnership that will include a rib, which is a rapid infiltration basin, along with some additional storage out at our plant on Cleveland, so we're looking to take on, could be as, as high as two million more gallons a day, you know, during the rainy season from Altamont, with the ability to either put it into storage or, and/or put it into a rib, which is basically putting it back into the aquifer, so, uh, looking forward to that agreement, um, they're great partners with us, and so we're, we're excited to be able to, to, to work with them, and so, with that.
Hey, we're, um, can we get, uh, like a Facebook thing for the concert series, because I really want to throttle that advertising.
Sure.
If you can get one of those made.
Absolutely. You can get with Kelly as well? Yep, yep, absolutely, make it happen. Okay, with that.